Ladies and gentlemen, I'll declare the meeting open. And thank you for your attendance. There is no interest in a public forum. And we do however have apologies from councillor Wilson for her absence and councillor Gary for a possible early departure. I'll move that those apologies be sustained. Seconded by councillor Hawkins, those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. In terms of item three, the confirmation of the agenda. Firstly, I'll move that we confirm the agenda with the following alteration in respect of standing order two one, that option C be adopted in relation to moving and seconding speaking to amendments. And also that item nine be taken at an appropriate time in the meeting when the students arrive. Unusually, they want not to leave school early. Things have changed. And so I'm assuming that they'll be here sometime after three. We may well have finished by then, but I won't be holding my breath. So with those two qualifications, councillor Staines is moving. Seconding councillor Stepman, those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. Can I just make one other comment I should have about item nine? This is a presentation that was made to the regional council and it came to our attention by these groups of students from these two schools. It seemed to me that it would be most worthwhile for us to hear what they have to say and the result of their investigations. But clearly the public forum probably didn't provide enough space, time to do that. So that's why they've been agendoned in the way that they have. I'll move that the committee notes in amends if necessary the elected members' interest register attaches to attachment A. Are there any amendments of any kind? No. And that confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interest discussion. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. And that takes us to the item to item five, which is the planning and environment non-financial activity report for the quarter ended 30th September. Mr Blair and Ms McGill and Ms Pinfold. Thank you. Now, do you wish to make any introductory comments Nicola or Adrian? Questions about the non-financial report? Councillors? Councillor Lord?
Look, I just want to have a question Adrian about the building consents on page 18 of 82. It says in the comments, there'd been pressure on the 20-day working turnaround and yet I note that you're still achieving 93% and 95% in August and September. You would have to be reasonably happy with that, wouldn't you? I know it's not 100%, but it's still...
Yeah, through the chair, very happy. I'll ask Mr Hedison to comment.
Well, could you also just factor into your comments, if you've been here long enough, that that's a huge improvement on a few, couple of years ago, is it not?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, certainly through the chair, certainly from my point of view legislatively, obviously we're required to do the 20 days, so that's absolutely what we're aiming for, so anything less than that, yeah. But fingers crossed going forward we'll still retain the 20 working days. But yeah, vast improvement.
Thank you. Further questions? There appearing to be none. I'll move the noting of the report. Can I have a second please? Councillor Hall, any discussion? Councillor Lord?
Well, I would just say that compared with the space that we were in a year or two ago, that seems a really good space to be in terms of building consents, where we were getting a lot of criticism and just hope people appreciate that we're in a much better space and thank you.
Thank you for that and I think that's a useful comment. There has been a significant improvement in meeting deadlines and councillors will have noticed the comment in the report that that will improve further as staff finish training, have returned from other allocations and so on. Those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. That takes us to item six, which is the review of the gambling at TAB venue policy. Welcome Mr Meachan.
Greetings. Now, would you like to just give us a brief introduction or make any summary comments you'd like to, Kevin, about what's in the paper?
Yes, concerns the review of the gambling and TAB venue policy. Up until the last review, we had a reasonably open policy, but it saw the decline in number of venues and machines greater than the national average, sort of a surprise to everyone. The last review, we decided to put a sinking lid in place in the area of South Dunedin and this time we recommend getting across the board. But it may be that the, it looks like the numbers have sort of bottomed out as it were, so I suppose we could probably predict numbers may go up a wee bit if industry in Dunedin sort of picks up. As far as the report itself goes, in paragraph two and 10, I've got brackets attachments A and B, they were sort of from a previous iteration and shouldn't be in that report.
Thank you. Questions councillors? Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Just referring to table one in paragraph 10. So that's our, if you like, aspirational target, the sinking lid of five venues, 50 machines and rest of Dunedin, 30 venues, 362 machines. And so natural attrition will ultimately get us there because we don't have the power to reduce, we can't...
Can't force them to...
Existing licences are protected, we can't do anything about that, is that right?
Yeah.
And just further, it says something, I'm sorry, I can't find the exact paragraph, but there's a comment somewhere where it says that venues are limited to nine machines per venue. If the sinking lid in South Dunedin is five venues but 50 machines, I don't see how we can get there.
The policy's not retrospective to any venue that was licensed on the 17th October 2001. Most of those venues in South Dunedin were licensed before that date, so they maximum is 18 and we can't do anything about that.
Oh, and they already have more than nine machines? Okay, got it.
So, and the no transfer element is the vehicle that will solve that issue?
Yes.
That's the argument, isn't it?
Yes.
Do you consider, you visit this in the report, do you consider it likely that people are going to maintain unprofitable or failing venues for the sake of retaining a licence? It would seem that would be fairly counterintuitive, wouldn't it?
Yeah, at previous conferences, and there's one coming up next February, it has been mooted that one of the reasons why the decline hasn't been as fast as what was anticipated when the act came in was because premises, the societies are keeping premises going when they're not profitable, they're sort of just carrying it so that they don't lose their position in that market. But whether or not that's true, no idea.
Time will tell. Yeah. Further questions? Councillor Wiley?
Kevin, so there would be no opportunity with the growth of Mozgul for a new sports bar to open with TAB facilities and, say, sex poker machines?
Not if the sinking lid across the district was put in place.
Okay. So in an area of growth versus, would you see that as a, the people that have already got, those have got a commercial advantage in that sense?
Yes, although they're limited on how much income they can get from the machines themselves, it's the society pays a, like a lease for the space sort of thing and that's limited by legislation. So their advantage would be that they've got the machines and they'll attract people there so they can drink or have meals. So yes, there would be an advantage.
Okay. Then if we go back to the report that we had in community and culture on the Masters Games, it talked about the budget forecast for revenue from gaming trusts was 92,500. So if we look at that, do we have an idea of how much money is generated and put back into the community by the gaming trusts across Dunedin?
On, we were just talking about this, morning, on table two on page 30, it has the spend in Dunedin going back to 2008. That's not broken between the South Dunedin, it's just Dunedin generally. And about one-third of that goes back into a community.
So one-third of the 16 points?
Million, yeah.
Six million, okay.
Would come into, come back to the community.
All right. There is nothing really taking place or, I don't, or I haven't seen it in this report and I actually haven't seen it a little bit beyond this, is about online gambling and people gambling at home and the effects of that?
At the moment, all the researchers say that the online gambling is less than 1% of gamblers, so it's very, very small at the moment. As I said, there's a conference coming up next February and that's one of the things to be discussed. And I suppose there would always be a fear if gaming venues disappeared, that people with that addictive personality would go to the electronic film. Again, that's sort of crystal ball stuff.
I know the TAB, for example, have seen quite a hit in the online versus physically going and placing bets.
Yeah.
And can you just elaborate, when someone has a venue with multiple machines, they have quite a strict code that they have to adhere to with staffing and monitoring problem gambers or people they believe are problem, potentially problem gamblers?
Yes, that's now being set in regulation and there's now a process where the onus is on a venue operator to identify those with gambling problem and refer them to Problem Gambling Foundation, Oasis, whatever. And there's also a thing that's now started where if you believe you've got a gambling problem, you can self-exclude from one or more venues. And the Dunedin area seems to be leading the country in that. It's the service providers, you know, treatment providers are working closely with these societies. Dunedin seems to be a bit unique in that they do have a really good relationship. That appears to be working.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Appearing to be none. Oh, councillor Hawkins, you're moving? I'm a seconder for the recommendations, which are A and B on the, on the order paper. Sorry? Ah, yes. Sorry. Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour please say aye. Against no. That's agreed. That takes us then to item seven, Animal Services Annual Report for the Department of Internal Affairs. Ms McGill. This is the annual statutory requirement. Do you want to make any comment about the report before us, before we ask questions?
No, thank you, I'm quite happy to take questions.
Thank you. Questions councillors? Councillor Offiso?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you for the report and I just noted in the summary of considerations that, I think I did, that Ngatahi were consulted, were they?
Not for this, it would be for the following report.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Further questions? You're moving, thank you very much. The recommendation is that we note the Animal Services Annual Report to the Department of Internal Affairs. I have a seconder, councillor Newell. Discussion? I'll put it, those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That's agreed. And staying with dogs, we'll go to item eight, which is the review of the 12-month trial permitting dogs in, permitting dogs in DCC owned cemeteries. Do you wish to make any introductory comment about the issue, the trial and so on?
Yes, please, thank you, through the chair. I just wanted to elaborate on a couple of items, just to bring some of the councillors up to speed that weren't involved in the initial consultation. It was an extensive consultation process which we received 153 dog owners or non-dog owners in support of this actual allowing dogs into cemeteries. We, we did a trial with the panel over a 12-month period with the concept of introducing shared spaces and that was also included with the Esper Leonard, which has actually been very successful. We wanted to give dog owners more of an opportunity to have, show that they're able to act responsibly in these areas and we've received no complaints over that time. The initial consultation didn't take into consideration that there would be a, an outcome of having to go to full consultation if option two was considered at the time. We surveyed five stakeholders and three of those were responded to and they are, as I've outlined in the report, concerned about fowling in the cemeteries. And we also spoke with parks and recs who have no issues around, around this concept. We got 157 responses from the People's Panel, which has got 1,400 members, and last time we had 397 responses in support of this, which is 34%, I think, with dog owners that responded to the question initially. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My first question is a process question and it might be for Ms Rusha. Given that we're essentially in a rock and a hard place between choosing the recommended option or going through an entirely new consultative process to try and amend it, would it be considered that writing a time-limited trial into a bylaw, as has been the case, wouldn't be best practice?
Look, I don't really have a firm opinion as to whether or not it's best practice. All I can say is it's a very reasonable practice for a council to adopt when it's changing something that's in an area where the values about death and visiting graves is very important to the community and we're just unsure how our community will respond. So it seems a very reasonable approach to have consulted on trial, to have conducted that trial, checked with our cemetery users and come up with a recommendation where you can change your approach, if you wish.
But to change the approach would require going through a special consultative process?
Yes, yes, it does appear that way. So the legislation and the way that it was amended allows us to confirm changes or confirm trials without that additional step.
But not to go, but not to go back on them? We can confirm it without going through that process, but you can't stop it without going through that process, the trial?
Look, it depends on the situation. The test is on the impact on the community and whether it's a minor change, so, or something that has a significant impact. And in this proposal, it's minor to retain that change and to reverse it does seem to have a significant impact. And so therefore that triggers the special consultative procedure.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, another one?
Yeah. For Ms McGill, I mean, it's interesting the comments that you make around, you've received no complaints. I don't know how many people call into the council every time they see dog fowling. CSA would probably do very little else if that was the case. There's certainly been feedback through the survey in this instance that suggests that there is a degree of unhappiness with the way dogs have behaved. Is there any, has any thought been given to whether the degree of monitoring and enforcement is adequate over the past 12 months?
The staff have spoken to the operators of the cemeteries and they've commented on an increase in fowling and what we've, we have been and visited, we haven't noticed any fowling or any irresponsible behaviour, the officers haven't noticed that. We've not received any complaints from the public via customer services. We have received complaints about fowling in other areas, but not specifically in cemeteries. We would like to think that we, the idea is that we, we need to increase the poo bag holders and perhaps look at the signage and increase patrolling if necessary to try and educate the dog owners.
So that's, that's a commitment to those things happening?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Councillor Gary?
Thank you, Mr Chair, and it's a helpful transition to what I have to ask. So for communities in outlying areas who don't see dog control terribly often, I would suggest in their reserves, let alone in their cemeteries, have, you obviously haven't had any feedback, but what I want to know is how will you enforce it in those outlying cemeteries?
Through the chair, we have officers that are out, we've got six officers actively out and about and we can't be in all areas at all times, but if we find that there's an issue in a particular area, we will start to focus on that in particular. So if there is an outlying area, for example, we've had issues out at Waikauiti, the officers spend more time in those areas to try and educate.
Councillor Lord?
Is there my questions been asked by councillor Hawkins?
Further questions councillors? Councillor Offiso?
Thank you, Mr Chair. So I just wanted to ask, what was the feedback from the runaka in terms of shaping your 2016 bylaw?
Excuse me, Chair, I just have to go through and have a look at the initial comments. They were in regards to the cultural implications of the cemeteries. They were quite comfortable with us looking at the DCC-owned cemeteries, however, they were wanting to maintain their own control over the areas.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
Yeah, Cal?
Well, following up on that, I note that we're about to set aside, or consider setting aside areas in public cemeteries for Maori. So if it is culturally inappropriate to have dogs within areas where Maori are buried, will this not have implications or will we have to have different rules? So I just wonder whether we've considered that into the future.
It's a very good question through the chair and I'd have to ask, as far as I'm aware, that they were comfortable with us as long as the dogs were on a lead and they were respecting the area.
I'm just pointing out that we could run into unintended consequences as a result of changes that we might make to our cemeteries.
Just on that matter, can I follow that up? Because clearly the signage at Ennis's Bay, which I've seen, is appropriate and welcoming and quite unequivocal, but dogs will wander as well. And so I just wanted confirmation that as, if the committee does agree to these recommendations, that the comment about extra enforcement, education and enforcement is also a commitment?
Absolutely.
Right, thank you. Well, some are prepared to move the recommendations, they're on page 51 of the, I think councillor Alder, seconded. Councillor Hall, any further discussion? Oh, sorry, first of all councillor Alder, do you want to speak to the motion as the move? Councillor Newell?
Just slightly off topic, but just to congratulate staff on the dog parks that we do have and the condition that they're kept in, because it's wonderful as a dog owner and the separation of the little ones and the big ones is brilliant, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Warm fuzzies always welcome. Any further comments, discussion? Appearing to be none. I'll put it, those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
Against no. That is agreed. That takes us to item 10. I'm sure we'll still be going when our students get here. Item 10 is responding to requests to endorse our climate declaration and the call, it's also, the councillors will remember these two presentations at council public fora in respect to the Zero Carbon Act. So, do we have some staff? Ms Pinfold? Councillor Haw, do you want to make some introductory comments about the report, Ms Pinfold?
Through the chair, all it was going to say was that the team are on their way over here, so I'm just holding, holding the seat and see what I can cover in their absence. Maria and her team are on her way over.
All right, you can make a start. Councillor Hawkins, do you want to? Oh, have you to move? And you're moving the what, noting?
I'm moving that we've got the report, all of the both the climate declaration and the zero carbon.
Okay, so you want to do it, I think it's sensible to have one discussion about the two issues and if councillors are happy with that, when we get to the voting on the second part, we can vote.
Happy for them to be taken separately.
Taken separately. So that's moved, I have a seconder, councillor Newell. Any discussion? Do you want to speak first councillor Hawkins? Or do you want to wait until other, do people have pressing questions in addition to the paper that we need, should wait for the staff to get here or not? Or they could stay, stay in their offices and work, you mean? We'll just, we'll just wait for a moment until, until they get here. Let's hope school finishes on time. We'll be rescheduling then. Greetings. We're not sure we have any questions, but just in case, welcome.
It was a good fast run.
Councillor Wiley?
Thank you. Maria, I notice in paragraph 16, 17 and 18, the work that council's currently doing, can you just expand on some of that for us?
Yeah, so the council signed up to being part of the compact of mayors and as part of that commitment, we have to develop a set of targets for emissions reduction as a city with our key stakeholders in the first instance and then I see as likely that that should go to public consultation once those draft targets are set.
So basically, when we look at that, that applies to 17 and 18 as well, paragraph 17 and 18?
Yes.
What other work, and again, you've got a lot going on, but what other work do you, have you got going on that applies to this motion or this paper?
I mean, I think, as an organisation, the DCC is part of the CMAR's carbon footprinting certification, so we have targets as part of that for emissions reduction. We also have, I think we've put in the report that through Te Atura, you confirmed the council's wish to see emissions reduction in its, in the future. So I think there's a picture of, of a wish and a need to reduce carbon emissions and I guess this is why we've flagged that in this report, because the public forums related to that, to that idea.
Further questions councillors? There are none. So we have a motion from councillor Hawkins, who's second please? Councillor Newell, that we note the report and that we endorse both documents and take the endorsement in separately. Do you want to speak to it now councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, happy to. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Both of these papers that have been brought to us by members of our community are entirely consistent with our council's own strategic aspirations that reflect the ambitions of our community. One of the goals in Te Atura, our environment strategy is to be a carbon zero city and that's what the Zero Carbon Act is setting out to do at a, at a national level. I just want to address a couple of the points raised in the report. One, the suggestion that by endorsing these, it may in some way limit or preempt future decisions of council around this work. I don't, I don't see how it could if you accept that 2050, mid-century is the deadline that we have, that we're steering down the barrel of in terms of becoming carbon neutral. So it would only limit or preempt us if we were to set targets for ourselves that went beyond that. There'd be nothing in a nationally mandated deadline that would prohibit us or limit us from being more ambitious around that in terms of, in terms of, of the deadline. And the other suggestion is that these are things that are designed for individuals to sign up to, more so than organisations or institutions, which I disagree with in sofar as generation zero have been particularly... sofar as Generation Zero have been particularly active in seeking out organisations and institutions to endorse this work, whether they're political parties or local government in New Zealand, or indeed Dunedin City Council. It's why they presented it to us at a public forum and asked for our support in endorsing it, and why we're considering it at this meeting. There's a tendency sadly still to see discussions around environmental issues, and particularly around the response to climate change issues as being political or ideologically driven. And even if that weren't a pejorative term, and I don't think it is, what Generation Zero is setting out to do with the Zero Carbon Act is to try and remove that, remove it from the political arena as much as possible, taking it out of the political arena, setting nationally mandated targets and holding government to account for that. You know, I note that it does, I mean, it was raised as an issue in the lead-up to the last election, it has the support of the Labour Party and the Green Party, but also the young Nats, which means it will soon be universally supported across the political spectrum. It's based on a model that was implemented in the United Kingdom in 2008 by David Cameron's Conservative government with an overwhelming majority in the House of Commons. So I don't see this as, this isn't a left or right issue, this is a 21st century or a 20th century issue, and we have to pick which team that we want to be on. I don't see how you can pick the 21st century without making serious commitments around this. I would like to take this opportunity to note the significant contribution to this debate that Jan Wright has made as the Parliamentary Commissioner for the Environment. The Gen Zero work essentially parallels and is informed by the PC's work. Her service is over and we wait with interest to see what the incoming Parliamentary Commissioner, Mr Upton, brings to the debate. The Zero Carbon Act is a high-level framework, really. It's just asking for a commission, a commission outside of parliament to be established, to set targets and hold government to account for them. Our climate declaration essentially is more of a how, in terms of setting out a schedule of the things that we know need to happen if we're to have even the remotest chance of hitting 2050 as a deadline for becoming a zero-carbon community and economy. We can't do all of these things on our own, obviously, it's a, we're all in this waka together, and it will require more active support from central government and from the private sector and NGOs and the philanthropic sector if we are to achieve these ambitions. So I think lending the weight of council to these declarations is entirely consistent with the policies and strategies that we have, and I recommend us doing so. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor O'Malley.
I think there will be those who will say that the council's role is not to do this kind of thing, and I feel that in fact, that I don't agree with that position, I think that in fact often is not, it's our job to take a leadership position on these things. And I draw attention to councillors, and I'll send this article on to you, it was actually in yesterday's Guardian, about a town in flatland Texas, really Georgetown, right in the middle of the oil fields that has gone to 100% renewable energy, and they've done it for economic reasons. So it's not only social reasons and long-term sustainability, but in fact, in the end, it will be the countries that get themselves off oil first will be the ones that will be exempt, the economic stresses and pressures that will come upon us in the next fifty or sixty years. Right now, it's relatively cheap fuel, carbon fuels, but they won't be, stay cheap forever, and the sooner you convert, the better, really, in my opinion.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers councillor Wiley.
I will not be supporting this. I think the council staff are working through a number of these issues quite effectively and at a reasonable pace, but they're also engaging across the community and having full stakeholder engagement. I feel like this is actually going to run over the top of that, and a lot of the community are going to get really pissed off with this decision because we haven't heard from them with some of these issues. So I will be not supporting this.
I agree entirely with councillor O'Malley that we should be aiming for 100% renewable energy. If the Dutch rail system can do 6,000 rail journeys a day and do it all on solar and wind, then obviously it's doable and it's preferable. However, zero-carbon is a different question altogether. I believe there are some good reasons why in our recommendations from staff, that the recommended option, option one, is that council does not formally endorse either of the initiatives. Zero-carbon is something of an extreme, a wee bit like the 100% pure that is now getting our tourism industry into trouble. Zero-carbon as the aim for a carbon-based life form seems to me to be running into a dead end as well. The whole essence of what we do politically and the whole essence of what decisions we make have to be based around practical, workable alternatives that are not run by the extreme ideologies. We as a city council are already making great strides in the direction of greening everything we do, even going to enormous expense counting CO2 emissions, not just from our own operations, but from those of our contractors now, an expensive operation for which, quite frankly, I think is also a step too far. So we have a situation now where we're asking to endorse very, well, extreme initiatives against the recommended option of staff at a time when I don't believe that any of these things is practical, and I think that basically it's, if we were to do that, it would simply be an unrealistic and ideological throw-in to whatever the fad of the day is. So for these reasons, I will be voting against the current motion, and I am somewhat disappointed that we haven't had more people speaking for the staff recommended option.
Thank you councillor Alder.
I think that the aspirational goals which have been presented to us are really positive, but I still believe that as part of our significance and engagement policy, we say that we want to engage with stakeholders if things affect them. And I think this is a debate for the whole of the community, and so I believe that doesn't exclude some of the Generation Zero and the declaration, but it does mean we have the opportunity to work with stakeholders, to come up with something that the whole of the city has been involved in, and I think that's an aspiration that I would like to be involvement. So I would go with recommendation on option one, because I think that this issue is for the whole of the city to debate and discuss and come up with solutions for.
Thank you, Mayor Cole.
I'd like to just reiterate councillor Hawkins' point about this being a political issue. In fact, the proposal for a climate change commission is precisely to avoid it being a political issue, and the reason for that is not because there's anything wrong with things being political, it's because this issue extends over such a long period of time, well beyond the term of any government. And so, as in Britain, it was felt that there wasn't any point in just having a politicised climate commission to do whatever, but that it had to be outside the government, it had to be outside the parliament, so that it was independent of it and would live longer than any government. That's the first thing. The second thing is, this, certainly the zero-carbon proposal, is perfectly consistent with council's existing policies, and it's more than that, as councillor Hawkins pointed out, very consistent with our own parliamentary commissioner's recommendations in her last report. But more importantly, it's not, and I think that councillor Vandevus mentioned that the aspiration for carbon zero is extreme, this isn't actually about that aspiration, it's about putting mechanisms in place to set targets, and it's perfectly feasible that the climate commission might say, well, actually councillor Vandevus is partly right, and it is too extreme to try and reach zero, but the point is, we need a mechanism and we need an apolitical mechanism, that's what this is about. It's not about, we know that the target is carbon zero by 2050, but the point is, rather than letting successive governments hope that we will get there, it's putting a mechanism in place to set intermediate targets so that we get progress along the way and we know what we're doing. So I fully support this. This isn't inconsistent with anything that council's already doing, and it's not going to prevent council from doing anything it's already doing, it's just going to reinforce it and reinforce. And might I point out also that at the recent local government in New Zealand AGM, the climate change declaration was issued by all councils, which we all endorsed, and this was part of it, so we're just doing what our parent organisation's already done.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I heard councillor Vandevus use the word extreme, and I'd like to frame that, these are extreme times. On a day when a storm is raging in Ireland like they've never seen before, we've got extreme times right now, and so I have no difficulty whatsoever supporting, endorsing our climate declaration and the Zero Carbon Act. It doesn't preclude us from continuing the discussions with our community, of course we need to take them with us, but, and as other speakers have said, it's consistent with our other policies, and with all due respect to staff's recommendation, I feel very strongly that we should be endorsing those two things. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lord.
Yeah, look, I can't support this. Some of the stuff, to me, is just bordering on the ridiculous, halting the expansion of industrialised intensive farming, what does that mean? No one's really even saying what that means, it's just a goal, but the alternative is that somehow farming is not industrialised, well, that just doesn't make sense. Replace the unsustainable drive for endless economic growth and consumerism, which serves the interests only of the very wealthy. The reality of it is that it's not just the wealthy in this country that benefit because of the strong economic growth, it's everybody, and you only need to go to places like Africa and India and you see the thousands and thousands of people that can't eat and can't have houses because they don't have strong economic basis. Things like eating less meat and dairy, you know, this is just the goals of a very, very small view of population that have got a very small view of the world, and I just don't accept that this is really where we want to be heading at all, so I can't support it.
Thank you, further speakers? councillor Hawkins, your right of reply?
Yeah, thank you. I think councillor O'Malley was right in saying that these things are about leadership. Are they easy to do? No. But are they absolutely the right thing to do? Yes. And like I said, this council won't be able to do it by itself, neither will the city or this country, but if we're to have an enduring hope of a stable climate for future generations, an obligation that we have, a statutory obligation we have to consider in what we're doing, then we have to take this stuff more seriously. But also, is it good for the environment? Yes. Is it good for our economy to take these things seriously? You bet. If you can't buy the environmental argument, then surely you can be swayed by the economic opportunity that awaits us, rather than the status quo of investing in other countries' infrastructure by way of the emissions trading scheme, so that they can transition to a sustainable low-carbon future at our expense. The debate has been won around climate change, and we've seen a perfect example of that today. Nobody's ever, people have stopped arguing about whether or not it is a thing. It's now far easier to say, yes, it is a very serious issue, but we're doing quite enough already, thank you, and we don't need to make more of an effort to address what is fundamentally an existential crisis that we face, and I don't think that's good enough. And I think that endorsing declarations like this show that this council doesn't believe that that's good enough in terms of the legacy we leave for the people who come after us. And just finally, around the comments that have been made that we haven't heard from the community, and that we haven't consulted or we haven't engaged with stakeholders, we did exactly that over a fairly extensive period of time during the work we did around Te Atura, our environment strategy, under which the goal of being a zero-carbon city sits. That's when that, and I appreciate that not all of our current elected members were here during that process, but that was an extensive process that got us to the point that we're at now. Outside of that, we're constantly hearing from community groups coming to us and telling us that they want this organisation to take environmental issues more seriously. It was the single biggest number of responses we got during the last long-term plan process was for greater investment in biodiversity and in climate action at this council table. So this is entirely consistent, and not just with council's policies and strategies, but the will of our community has been expressed to us with increasing volume and tenure over recent years. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, well, as I said, we'll take the two matters separately, and we'll do so, we'll vote by way of division. So the first one is that we endorse, oh, sorry, we'd better note the report first. The first question is that we note the report, I think we'll abandon the division for that. You want the motion up on the board? All of them. The motion is that we note the report, and the second is that we endorse our climate declaration, and the third one is that we endorse the Zero Carbon Act initiatives. Yeah, separate them. Okay, so the noting of the report, those in favour, please say aye. Against no? Do you want to do that again? The noting of the report, those in favour, please say aye. Against no? That's agreed. And now we go to the council endorsement of our climate declaration. By division, please.
councillor Alder.
I would like to say no.
Well, you say yes or no, and that's all you say, not a speech, please.
No.
No, that's fine.
councillor Gary.
Yes.
councillor Hall. councillor Hawkins. councillor Lofiso. councillor Lord. councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
councillor Newell. councillor Staines. councillor Stedman. councillor Vandevus. councillor Wiley. councillor Benson Pope.
Aye. Such elevation.
Carried nine five.
Thank you, that's carried, and the second motion, that we endorse the Zero Carbon Act initiatives, would you call the division again, please?
Sure, your worship. councillor Alder.
No.
councillor Gary.
Aye.
councillor Hall. councillor Hawkins. councillor Lofiso. councillor Lord. councillor O'Malley.
Aye.
councillor Newell. councillor Staines. councillor Stedman. councillor Vandevus. councillor Wiley. councillor Benson Pope.
Aye.
Carried nine five.
Thank you, that is agreed. That takes us to item eleven, the paper in respect of a request for the extension of time for delivery of the two GP decision. Mr Freeland, welcome. Would you like to, and Mr Hyby is, sorry, would you like to make any comment about the paper? It's pretty self-explanatory, but there may well be questions. Do you want to make any comments in introduction?
No, it is quite self-explanatory. I'd just like to note that it's not uncommon for large full-plan reviews to go longer than the statutory period. QLDC has recently extended theirs, and there's a staged approach in the two-year time.
councillor Vandevos.
in recommending option one with a 12-month extension, under the disadvantages, I don't see anywhere listed the fact that it's going to cost, just for the panel and their advice, another $700,000 to run it for another year. Why are the extra costs not listed under disadvantages?
I'm not aware of that cost of the panel.
well, let me read it to you, and I have the email we'd hear from Vikla, and it says here, "We have extracted the relevant costs of the statement of financial performance for the year ended 30 June 2017, and confirmed that the total spent on commissioners and external advice relating to the second generation plan was $696,000. As there are privacy issues surrounding the remuneration for each commissioner, we have provided you with an aggregated figure." She also adds that "it's not possible to provide total staff costs, as most members of the Dunedin City team are involved in the project and their time has not been recorded." So we're looking at a minimum of $700,000 for an extension of a year, 2GP, is how it would appear from this information.
right, okay. I wasn't aware, that would be how you perceive it. We've actually had in the order of 25 of 27 hearings, so we've only got two small hearings left. The panel is as keen to finish this as the staff are. We anticipate that we should be finished by March, and there's the Christmas period as well. It would not be that total value, again, to finish the process. There'll be some relatively small percentage of that, probably in the order of 20%, perhaps, nothing like 100%.
So, given that you're fairly sure it'll be finished in March, should we happy with a six-months extension then?
Well, the reason we asked for a 12-months extension was that if for any reason it did go beyond March, we didn't feel it was necessary, we didn't want to have to come back to this body to ask for another, what is largely a procedural matter.
I've been a wee bit surprised to discover that it's such an extraordinarily expensive process. Do we get value from it in that if the process is thorough, it will save us money in the long term from legal challenges to the changes? And I'm thinking especially of the zoning changes, which have been described by many people to me as draconian.
Yes, it looks like an expensive process, and it is, but it's a much more expensive process if you get to the Environment Court and into appeals. You may have seen through the media, for example, in Hamilton, the mayor's family trust, as it happened, appealed a matter to the Environment Court, and it cost the council $500,000 to defend that one appeal. So the better we can make the decisions and the more inclusive they can be of what submitters have said, and the closer we can get to having them right and avoiding appeals, the better off we will be.
How confident are you of, with this extra time period that we're talking about, that you will be able to avoid appeals to the Environment Court?
That's a very fraught question. We are doing our best. At the moment, we couldn't deliver a decision on all the matters before us. We've got two hearings to go, and a lot of large decisions which just aren't written yet. And we're hoping that the panel will have made their decisions by the end of this year, and the couple of months into the new year will be actually writing decisions, making sure that everyone's recorded accurately, no one's missed out in the process, and we can avoid any sort of procedural appeals as well.
So you're saying, in fact, that we really do have to have this extra 12 months, and there's no other way of looking at it?
We couldn't put out a decision today. We're already past our two years.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
thank you. Any further questions? All right, then, someone prepared to move the recommendation? Oh, councillor Wiley? You're moving? That we approve the extension of delivery time for the 2GP from 26 September 17 to 26 September 2018, a seconded? councillor Lord, what impeccable timing, as our students begin to arrive, but we have done very well. Any discussion? councillor Vandevos.
since we tend to be limited in making comments about things that aren't directly in front of us, and we have the 2GP extension directly in front of us, I would like to simply pass on that the, certainly in the rural area, by far the most majority of complaints that I have had have been around the rezoning issues that have come to us with the 2GP. But this has been going on for, I think, three years now.
councillor, I've got a process issue here. We are very constrained, and if you start talking about the process, then I'm going to rule you out of order. I don't know what complaints you've had or not had.
And you're never going to get to know them if you never let me talk about them, but thank you for listening to me as far as you did.
councillor, if you interrupt like that, you will be leaving the meeting. This is a statutory process. You're a trained commissioner yourself, you know the detail of that process. It is not appropriate to debate issues around the outside of that other than in that process. So if you have a statement to make about the motion, please proceed with it, but please do not go down that line.
The statement I was making was about the motion. The motion is a 12-month extension.
No, no, the statement you were making wasn't about the motion, it was about complaints in the rural sector that had been brought to you by your family. That is completely irrelevant and cannot be any part of this conversation.
For you to rule that that's irrelevant...
I believe it is going to be odd. I'll be asking you, if you keep on with that sort of attitude, councillor, you will be leaving the meeting. Is there any other debate or discussion about the motion that's been duly moved and seconded? There appears to be none, or put it, those in favour, please say aye.
you can.
I just want to thank staff for the work they've done to get this far, and I know how hard they would have tried to fit within the timeline. Also, to the councillors and the commissioners that have been part of this process, it has been something that has gone beyond what everybody hoped it would, and I'm sure they'll try and wrap it up in a timely fashion. So I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved in this today.
Thank you for that. I'll now put the motion, those in favour, please say aye.
aye.
Against, no?
no, recorded, please.
that's agreed. And that brings us to the final item on the meeting. Our guests have arrived, and we're still waiting for the Bayfield girls. Well, come and make yourselves comfortable at the table, and we'll just take, perhaps we'll take a two-minute break in anticipation of their arrival. And so you've got a presentation for us, and thank you for coming along. My colleagues and I are most impressed that you wanted to present after school hours. I think that's a very good message. So, the floor is yours, and after you've shown us what you've been up to, there'll be the opportunity, if you're happy with that, to field some questions from councillors. Is that all right? All yours. Push the button in the middle of that thing and talk relatively close to it, please. Bend it down, hello?
g'day, g'day.
Hello?
all right, that's right.
perfect.
cool, so let's start us off.
Okay, perhaps find us a bit of a background as to what they're doing. We got together, obviously, the 2015 floods affected our community, South Dunedin, the Kings High School community, and initiative, an initiative from the University of Otago, the DSIR, and other groups, geology groups, wanted to do some research and sourced funding through the Youth Science Foundation, the central government, to put ground sensors, water sensors into the ground. So we got some data, I won't say too much, I'll let these boys go, but it was a year 10, year 10 group, geography group, the old fourth form for those operating on the old system, and they worked in term two through May and June to put these assignments together. I hand it over.
awesome. Hello, we're here from Kings High School. I'm Oscar, this is Sam, and our other group member Jake could not come today. We will talk about the geography of South Dunedin and what potential challenges it will face in the future. So our class carried out an investigation to see what lies beneath the suburb of South Dunedin. Ultimately, we had one question in mind: what are the major natural hazards facing South Dunedin? Our aim was to investigate what the hazards are, why and when do they occur? As you may know, there are already many concerns for the future of South Dunedin, and from what we discovered, we can say that all the stories out there are true, and indeed, South Dunedin will be underwater. That tombolo, or piece of land, joining the peninsula and the rest of Dunedin, will be submerged. We can delay this, but we cannot stop it. We found that as the environment warms up through a natural cycle called climate change, the ice from the oceans and the glaciers melt, adding more water to the sea level, more rainfall running down the hills, also taking the topsoil, and water soaks through the permeable substrates in the earth. And that essentially is what groundwater is. It does fluctuate as the tide comes in and out, and when there is heavy rain. Groundwater levels are a good indicator of climate change and exactly how fast it is happening. And this photo here is from when we use these hand tools called augers to drill holes in the ground to see the sediment layers and which ones have water in them. A little bit about the history of Dunedin. I'm going to be talking to you about Dunedin's geological history and show you what lies beneath the South Dunedin sediment. I will also talk about the recent 2015 floods that happened in South Dunedin and the reason to why the water had risen so high above the ground. I'm going to take us back to 75 million years ago. Tunnel Beach was complete with no sea stacks. This is the earliest piece of geological history of Dunedin. At 13 million years ago, there was the first of the three major eruptions. This helped form Dunedin's landscape. 12 million years ago was the second main eruption, bringing lava flows and ash from Mozgill all the way to Waitati. This takes me to 11 million years back, when the third and final eruption phase occurred. These eruptions created several hills around the Dunedin area, including Flagstaff, Mount Cargill and Swampy Summit. Five million years ago, the southern Alps came up. This happened because the two major faults collided and started a buckle. Four million years ago, the temperature was two to three degrees warmer and the sea level was 10 metres higher than today. The carbon in the atmosphere was 400 parts per million, and that is the same as today. 20,000 years ago, there was another large change. The world was incurring another ice age. The glaciers were much larger, the sea level was 120 metres lower, and the Dunedin shoreline was 35 kilometres, kilometres, sorry, further offshore. 2,000 years ago was the time that a sandspit formed across South Dunedin, causing old sea stacks to become imprisoned on the land. 200 years ago was when the first settlers arrived on South Dunedin land. The shoreline ran through Jiddi Street, the current Settlers' Museum, and the railway station. Here is an image of the Sinclair Beach 100 years ago. As you can see, the wall that is there today, along with all of the cafes, is not there at all.
The Dunedin flood, undoubtedly one of the most catastrophic natural weather events to hit Dunedin on the 4th of June in 2015. It is expected that the occurrence of the floods will increase from one every 100 years to one every 50 years, then 20, and so on. What lies beneath South Dunedin? These photos show the man-made changes that South Dunedin area has undergone. As you can see, much of the original sand dunes have been demolished for filling the missing land around other areas of South Dunedin and to build esplanade on Sinclair Beach. You can see that much of South Dunedin flat was originally a freshwater wetland and marsh. And if you go even back even further in the past, you can see that South Dunedin flat had also been a drowned valley with many sand, silt, and gravel layers under it. And later during, and later during the 1970s, much of the area near the harbour, including Bayfield, had been reclaimed by filling in much of the inlets and harbour with sand, bricks, rocks, and other materials. We discovered many of these different sediment layers from when we used augers to drill holes in the South Dunedin area. But why would people want to build a city here? Sounds crazy from all of your perspectives today, to build on a very soft and dense wetland that is very flood-floed. But back when they had decided to build on the flats, the groundwater levels used to be much lower. Only in recent years have the sea level and groundwater levels risen so high due to the increase of gas emissions, melting ice caps, and land movements. In the near future, South Dunedin could be very vulnerable, very vulnerable to any possible earthquakes, as the Akator fault lines run right underneath and could shift at any moment. The result, the result of an earthquake could be devastating to South Dunedin. There you go. There you go.
These are the results. This graph shows the groundwater level recorded by the sensor under our sports field at Kings High School that the Otago Regional Council installed not too long ago. As you can see, the levels change and depend on tidal fluctuations and rainy weather. For Bayfield, their groundwater level is quite different, as they are closer to a large water source, that is Anderson's Bay inlet. So when the tide fluctuates and the sea level rises, the groundwater levels change dramatically. We will also mention the fact that the land they are drilling through is reclaimed land, as Sam said before, so the loose, very permeable land under there is unnatural and allows a steady flow of groundwater.
Sea erosion has been a steadily increasing problem for the South Dunedin towns. As time has gone on with the rise of the sea, the land is subsiding at 1 millimetre per year. As you can see from this photo, these are the results from the sea erosion, and that can be very destructive and sudden. It has started to erode away much of the dunes to a point where the government has been forced to step in. The government's solution to this problem was installment of a sand sausage, approximately the cost of over $2 million in construction. This will only be a short-term solution to the problem, as it's expected to last between only 10 and 20 years at most. If this problem is to continue at the rate of which it is going today, many of the houses along the coastline situated to the dunes will soon be in danger as well. And here we have a photo of South Dunedin with 10 metres of sea level rise. As you can see, much of the South Dunedin area has gone back to its previous state as a flooded inlet, and this could be expected to happen in the next 1,000 years or more. The future of Dunedin. It's not too, not too flash, is it? But is there a future for Dunedin? If the water levels continue to rise, we will soon be forced to evacuate the land we once lived on. If you look at a picture of the predicted future by Mark McLeod, you can see the residents have actually deserted the flats and migrated to the hills to live. Much of the painting relates to the problems that we are facing today in South Dunedin. And although this may not be a certain future of Dunedin, in 100 years, it could possibly be an option for the future of Dunedin. And to be honest, we don't really know the future of Dunedin, but we know that big changes will soon happen. And we would like to thank... And we'd like to thank our geography teacher, Mr. Cushing, our student teacher, Mrs. Hyman, all the scientists from the regional council who've spent much of their time teaching us and helping us with this project, Mr. Cox from GNS Science and Miss Hendra, the director of New Zealand International Science Festival himself. And we also like to thank all of you for coming here to listen to us and, uh, watching our slideshow and to see what the research we've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Samuel. Now, can I just, um, ask the presentation that, um, Phoebe Berg and Holly, have I got that right? Have is a different presentation from your perspective or was this all done jointly? You've got a different presentation? Right, well, I'm suggesting it might be better to have the girls come up now and give us their presentation and then we'll have a joint question session. Is that acceptable to people?
Yeah, that's good.
Great, thanks guys. So you take a, take a lounge chair out the back there and we'll get the, the second installment organised. Great. Now, if you would like to follow Ms. Adamson's instructions implicitly, um, press the button in the middle and speak, the, the microphone will light up. See?
South Dunedin, what lies beneath?
Background of South Dunedin. Geological Formation. Present-day South Dunedin began forming around sixteen million years ago when the Dunedin volcano began to erupt. This now extinct shield volcano went through three main eruptive phases, layering basaltic rock over schist and sediment and forming what is today the Otago Peninsula, Otago Harbour and mainland Dunedin. The Otago Harbour was originally a stream valley. However, sea level rise drowned this valley, leaving a harbour in its place. Sediment buildup at the southern end formed what is today South Dunedin. At the top here, we have a graph showing the layers of rock and differing stages of eruption. So at the bottom in grey is schist, which formed roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty million years ago. Then the second layer in green is sedimentary rocks, which formed... And the brown layer on top of that is the initial layer of rock that formed the ground surface before the volcano began to erupt. Then about sixteen million years ago, the volcano began its first main eruptive stage, which you can see here in yellow. Over that, we have the second and third eruptive stages. In orange and pink, with the most recent of those rocks dated to approximately ten to eleven million years ago. Finally, on top, which you can hardly see down the far right, is river and beach sand at a relatively young age of just one million years old. Reclaimed Land. South Dunedin was originally a flat swampy wetland known as the Flat and was covered in tussocks and flax. During the late nineteenth century, European settlers began refilling the square kilometres worth of waterlogged land with sand, gravel and any other available materials they could find, including building scrap and rubble. They topped up all the low-lying areas to just above the water table at that time. However, this water table level is up to seven centimetres higher today, which is causing problems with groundwater hazards such as flooding and ponding. On the left or the right, we have a picture comparing South Dunedin, what South Dunedin used to look like on top and what it looks like today down below.
South Dunedin Now. Most of South Dunedin has an elevation of just one point five metres above sea level. South Dunedin forms a natural land bridge between the Otago Peninsula and mainland Dunedin. South Dunedin is, is two point five kilometres away from the centre of town and has a population of around ten thousand people, roughly eight percent of Dunedin city's total population. South Dunedin has one of the highest population density rates in the area, in the city, with thirty-seven to forty-four people per hectare. There are several major commercial centres built here on reclaimed land, such as Maritim Mega, the Ega Centre, the Dunedin Gymnastics Academy, Bunnings Warehouse and the Courier Post Depot.
Water Boars. South Dunedin groundwater levels are measured by groundwater boars in six different locations. These locations are Kennedy Street, Tonga Park, Bathgate Park, Culling Park, King's High School and Bayfield High School. The Kennedy Street, Tonga Park and Bathgate Park boars have been recording since the twelfth of October, two thousand and nine. The Culling Park Water Boar has been recording since the second of May, two thousand and fourteen. And the King's High School and Bayfield High School boars have been recording since June, two thousand and seventeen. Since the boars have not been recording information for long, the water levels have ma, remained largely consistent, except for June third, two thousand and fifteen, due to flooding. All boars have monitors installed in them and record data such as temperature, electrical conductivity, depth to water from ground level and water height above monitor. Here we have some graphs displaying the data from one of South Dunedin's newest boars, our one at Bayfield High School. On top is a graph showing the depth to water from the ground surface over a twenty-four hour period. This was on the third of July, two thousand and seventeen. Generally, this level drops every twelve hours with a total range of about four centimetres. This is due to tidal influences from out, from the inlet. On the bottom is a graph showing temperature. This is only a slight range of less than a tenth of a degree, which is dropped steadily. Hopefully, as time goes on and we collect more and more data through our monitors, we will start to see patterns in the behaviour of the groundwater in South Dunedin. Natural Hazards. Some types of natural hazards are earthquakes, flooding, drought, wind, tsunami, landslides, snow and storm surges. The main risks to Dunedin are flooding, storm surges and wind. Wind landslides and storm surges are risks, risks because they speed up erosion. Earthquakes are a risk to the ground level of South Dunedin. Natural Hazards That Could Affect South Dunedin in the Future. Coastline Change and Erosion. Coastline change is becoming a problem in New Zealand, especially in South Dunedin. Over time, sand dunes have moved back and back, even encroaching onto sports fields and streets. An example of current coastal erosion is at Sinclair and Ocean Beach in South Dunedin. As you can see in the pictures, we have showing Sinclair before and after coastal erosion. Some causes of coastline change and erosion are water and tide levels, the wind and wave direction and sediment movement. Gravel barriers, dune systems and coastal wetlands can all help to protect inland areas from erosion. However, coastal areas are more at risk due to the direct influence of the sea.
Groundwater is the body of water found below the surface of the land. Water flows in the space between cracks and gaps in rock, gravel and sand known as an aquifer. Groundwater is replenished by natural sources such as rainfall and snowmelt in a process called infiltration. The level of groundwater is called the water table. Groundwater can be polluted by things such as landfills, leaky gas pipes or septic tanks and overuse of fertilisers and pesticides, making it unsafe to drink or use. New Zealand is estimated to have six hundred and twelve billion cubic metres worth of groundwater, which accounts for about thirty percent of New Zealand's water usage.
Groundwater Hazards. The hazards that groundwater poses include situations where the water lies so close below the surface of the ground that it may restrict drainage or even where groundwater rises so high that it could seep out onto the ground. The stormwater network in South Dunedin aids the drainage of groundwater under normal conditions. However, its ability to drain groundwater decreases rapidly during heavy rainfall events and when the sea level is elevated, meaning the groundwater table rises unrestricted and water may pond on the surface, leading to flooding. This was shown in the two thousand and fifteen June floods, when South Dunedin's wastewater system failed and water burst out onto the streets, flooding homes, schools and sports grounds. The groundwater hazards, combined with the high population mass of the area, can increase the severity of flood effect in South Dunedin. Flooding in South Dunedin after a large amount of rainfall has been an issue for some time and this was especially emphasised by data from the June floods in two thousand and fifteen. June Flood. On June third, two thousand and fifteen, South Dunedin suffered from flooding in low-lying areas. People experienced some degree of flooding from Omeru South to Balcluther. On the morning of June fourth, the day after the flood, water was still ponding in South Dunedin areas. The floods affected about twelve hundred South Dunedin properties. An event like this happened in May nineteen twenty-three, which caused similar effects across South Dunedin's, across South Dunedin and lasted for more than a day.
Sinking Land and Rising Sea Level. Due to unstable land that South Dunedin is built on, the area is slowly sinking at an average rate of one millimetre a year. This is due to sediment layers slowly being compressed down over time. An added factor to flood risk is rising sea levels. Due to climate change, sea level is rising faster and faster. As the earth warms up, so do our oceans. Um, and as water heats up, its particles expand. A little water expanding on its own wouldn't do much harm, but around seventy-one percent of the earth's surface is water. So all of it expanding is a big issue.
Earthquakes. Earthquakes are one of the natural hazards that could affect South Dunedin. They can affect the level the ground is at by either causing subduction, lowered ground level or uplift, raised ground level. The biggest earthquake risks to Dunedin are the Alpine Fault and the Akatua Fault System. Some other fault lines found close to Dunedin are the Teichy Fault, Green Island Fault and North Tyrie Fault. Scientific evidence has shown that there is a high chance that a major earthquake will occur on the Alpine Fault within the next twenty years. This could cause several problems in South Dunedin, such as lowered or raised ground level or liquefaction. Last November, after the Kaikoura earthquake, there were many examples of uplift. The seven point eight magnitude earthquake caused some areas to lift up to a metre and a half higher.
Liquification. The process of liquefaction is where saturated soil behaves like a liquid. This is a response to applied stress, such as an earthquake or high pressure. The grains of sand and sediment lose contact under high water pressure, creating a liquidous and unstable surface. Liquification can be a serious problem in areas with a high water table, meaning South Dunedin is at, is at risk. The Canterbury earthquake on the fourth of, the, fourth of September, two thousand and ten, produced four hundred thousand tonnes of liquefaction in the eastern suburbs.
To finish, we'd just like to thank the people and organisations who made this presentation and the project behind it possible. The Otago Regional Council, Curious Minds, GNS Science, Otago University, the New Zealand International Science Festival, Dan Hendra, Hugo Blor, Casey Falavert, Dirk Van Wolt, Simon Cox, Elise Gore, Rebecca Morris and of course, Mr. Richmond. Thanks for watching.
Thank you very much. Um, stay, stay there please, girls. Now, perhaps if you've moved along that way a bit. And, um, guys, can you just put, bring your chair up and slip into those other two microphones? And I'm assuming that, um, councillors will have some questions. But first of all, can I thank you? Um, one of the issues we clearly face with, in, in dealing with and managing the challenges for South Dunedin is making sure people are as informed as possible. Um, and obviously it's great, um, to see the work that you have done uh, and across a, quite a broad base of the area. And it's good to see those organisations that you've been working with and that all that helps immensely for the community, understanding the underlying issues and discussing with us as we work out what solutions and changes will happen. Um, discussing with us in an informed way what will be done. So, well done, thank you very much. Um, I don't see Mr. Richmond here today, we've got someone else supporting you today. A former colleague of mine, you understand. Um, now, who'd like to start? Questions, any, you happy to take some questions, I hope?
Yeah.
Great. Who'd like to begin? councillor Vandevos.
You've given us quite a bit of detail on, uh, sea level rise, uh, land subsidence at a millimetre a year and also earthquakes in the Akatua Fault in particular. Does learning about all these hazards, does that make you fearful about South Dunedin in particular or does it make you fearful about living in Dunedin?
I mean, I feel that all these issues could be a risk in other places as well. So I don't feel particularly unsafe in Dunedin.
Do you recognise that they are also perhaps an issue for places like Holland where you've said, I think, that in most of South Dunedin is only one point five metres above sea level? Seven, uh, sixty percent of the population of Holland, that's like ten million people, actually live below sea level. Were you aware of that?
No.
Yes.
Okay, so, so one of you was. Were you aware that a lot of that population, that ten million people, don't just live a little bit below sea level, but they live five metres below sea level? And that the biggest airport in Europe is five metres below sea level?
Yeah.
I was just wanting to put that out there because there are pumping solutions and the Dutch have found a lot of them. And the, the scary picture that you had there about the sea coming in and, and sort of drowning most of South Dunedin, that there are other ways around it. Are you aware that there are things that could be done by using pumps, for instance, to stop the sea level rise?
Yeah, um, we could, yeah, we could like take other ideas from other countries that have faced the same risks as South Dunedin and try and work together maybe to find other ways to solve the problems.
And, and have you looked at all at what Holland's done with its much worse problems?
No, we've only focused on South Dunedin at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Further questions, councillor Malley?
Thanks very much for those interesting reports. Um, and it's good to see that there's two more boars gone into the region. I've got a little personal interest in this area too. So I'm interested in the Bayfield Boar looks like it can clearly see and is influenced by the tides. And you mentioned that your boar was, but it didn't look that strongly influenced. Is that true? Do you, do you see that, do you see with the tide your boar going up and down? Or does it pretty much get more like it's responding to the amount of rain that went into the area?
More to the rain, not the, not the tide.
The King's, uh, boar is more responded to the rain rather than the Bayfield one. The Bayfield one is due to its being, uh, built on reclaimed land. Uh, the water, the groundwater levels rise up through the reclaimed land much easily because it was made from brick and sand salts, so it can rise really easily. And due to it being very close to the sea, it is raises up and down. So yeah, the King's is more affected by rain and you can definitely see at Bayfield how it's more affected by the tides.
Okay. And, um, yeah, because I think for me, the question that is of interest is how far inland from the edge can you see the tide? Because if we are looking at the long-term future of South Dunedin and another metre, if we add another metre of sea level rise, we're already getting the high tides come in at Tiviat Street. Um, so we'd see it coming over Portsmouth Drive at that point. If we were to stay, then we will have to build a dike and we will have to pump at that point. One of the influences that we'll have to deal with is how far inland does the sea penetrate? Because we'll have to pump against that as well as any of the groundwater coming in. So when you're going through with, if your school keeps doing this, these great experiments, I think you're fantastic. Um, I reckon one of the things you might want to be considering is actually a line that comes in from the sea. And then actually saying, okay, how far in does it take before you don't see the tide anymore? And that might tell you sort of something about what we're going to face. And like, if you see a king tide, do you see it pushing even further? Those kind of questions.
All right, further questions councillors? Councillor, councillor Hall?
Where councillor Lord, um, is farming, he's farming one metre below the Waipori River and the Torrey River. And all of that area of farmland is all a metre below sea level.
Yep, it's close enough.
Good question.
Yeah, um, we are, when I showed you that picture of the ten metres above sea level, we are, we were using a programme to, uh, monitor how the sea level rise. And we were looking at South Dunedin, we also noticed that a lot of the Tyre had also flooded with the ten metres. And we found out, if we looked back further, then we looked at some history, we found that that, that whole place used to be flooded. So the land that they're actually farming on is basically, um, uh, used to be a whole seabed. And I can find shells and stuff there as well. So that could also be a problem that they're facing as well. And you can see that in the recent floods that they've also been affected quite badly. And we should probably find some more solutions to help them as well.
Thank you, councillor Lawfesso.
Here was the chair. Thank you so much for, um, your work and for coming along and addressing us. Um, I, I'm curious to know, one, what, if any, um, response your whanau, your families have, um, given you about your project? And two, if you were city councillors and the mayor of Dunedin, at what point would you think that, um, we as, as civic leaders would have to, um, or what decisions would you make in terms of, uh, starting to prepare the South Dunedin community and families for... for making big changes, maybe even considering moving? Um, families have been there for generations. What's your opinion? Thank you.
Um, my family was really interested in seeing the project because we live in south Dunedin. So they were interested in how they'd been affected later. And for the second part of the question, I'd probably just work on informing people more because a lot of the people who live around me in south Dunedin don't know much about the issue. So having like some nights where people come to talk about how places would be affected would probably be a lot of help.
Great. Thank you. Well, you can be sure that we'll continue to do that and we'll rise to the challenge. That's a nice note to finish on, unless there's some other pressing question. Thank you again for taking the, for the work you've done, taking the trouble to come along. I'm delighted, um, you got here in the nick of time. That's why we started, we'd just finished the meeting when the guys arrived. So good to see you all and thank you very much and I'll let you get back to your homework.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you for your attendance and your patience.